Can I comment too?
Oh, yes, go ahead.
So I just wanted to comment too, since I've been superintendent, all the board presidents I've worked with have done a great job with that. And obviously last year, there was a lot of communication with President, former President Barry and I, and we had a communication going. So generally what I've done in trust in President Thorpe now, we've already started it with the communication. And I know some trustees have sent it. If it comes to the board and they forward it to me, I'll always defer to the board president. And ask if they want me to respond because a lot of times I'm in a better position to respond because of my role. And so President Thorpe and I have been doing that and obviously President Barry and previous president. So I know it's a lot more time on the president, but I've seen the presidents do deal with that in a very professional and a great manner. So I'm glad this conversations coming forward, but that's how I would continue to do it. If that's the pleasure of the president of the board, I would defer. And if they, if the president tells me to respond and then I kind of worded on behalf of the district because I'm not speaking, but I'm, you know, as the school district. But again, sometimes it's, I'm in a better position to respond just because of the nature of my job and the information I have. Or I'm getting that information from a team member and for me that has always worked. So I appreciate the board presidents and how they've communicated, communicated so well with me on those issues.
I would also share that to the public. When you send us a message and I can only speak for myself, I read the message. I don't personally respond back to you. It's not that I'm trying not to, but sometimes as Dr. Maliko said, we would have him respond on our behalf.
So I'll just jump reinforce that. We, I do suggest that this is being referred to as kind of an informal procedure or an informal practice. And with President Thorpe wanting to discuss Board Procedures Manual, which is item number nine on the agenda. I think this is something that that is perfectly fits there and could be spelled out so that it's no longer informal, but more of a formal procedure. So that's something you can pack while going forward. I also briefly cover something along those lines under appropriate communication under item number seven.
One thing I would just like to add for the new board members, sometimes you get rounded up by reporters or different people. It's always important just to preface, preface anything that you say is this is my own opinion, I'm not speaking for the board.
That's a great.
John, can I add one more comment on communication too? And this is something going back. Some of the trustees were on the board when I first was hired and we made the decision. You know, we have a great trust, I have a great executive team, they're all on here and there's a great trust and we really work well together. And we have different personalities and different styles, but we have differing opinions, but I trust them all. With the district our side with 21,000 students and you know, 2,700 employees. You know, for myself or maybe David as communication to be communicating with the board makes it difficult. We're just, and the board knows from my board briefs that I give every Thursday, how much information is in there? I mean, it's because we're, we're big. And so we made the decision several years ago that board members could communicate with the executives. But they would always either, either the exec would let me know or copy me. And that was the decision that was made because we're so core and our executives, directors on the executive cabinet have. You know, that relationship with the board, obviously the superintendent and board are closer. But the executives are going to be implementing a lot of things the board asked me to do. So that close relationship is so critical and I meet with my executives regularly. So that was just one thing that I wanted to mention. It was something too that the board at the time, back six years ago, had said it's okay for the executives to get the board briefs. Now the board briefs, there may be some sections that are, that I, we don't give to the executives. So I would say in my section, this is for the board only and Joanne would add it. The other point is that the executives, and I think we have a great communication system that we've, and I know the board has recognized that in my evaluation, but it's a teamwork. With the district our size, we developed, I believe it was about three or four years ago, this incident report system that David used to do. But now what we've done is we've expanded that to executive directors so that the board is constantly getting informed. And, and our executives know what to send and when to send through the different protocols. And trustee, our President Thorpe now has also asked that I have a couple more directors that can do incident reports. And that would be Abe Misher for athletics and student services and Mark Andrews. So I think that system's been working, but I figured with the new trustees to kind of revisit it because this is the norms we developed several years ago. And I just thought this would be a good time if everyone still agrees with that, you know, kind of protocol. But it seems to be a good communication system that's been working, you know, for us. And I don't know if the trustees, how they feel about it, but I feel for me, it's been working in my team. And I would continue it, but I'd also be opening to, open to any enhancements. And just so the trustees know, Joanne Harris is so good at designing that board briefs. When I first came on the board, one of the things I learned is some, you know, every board member has a different personality as you went into and they have different styles. So some board members, you know, it's like, give me the, the, all the detail and some, you know, look, I want kind of a click notes and I have the ability to go back to the detail. So that's why we've done kind of a link system with the board briefs to accommodate both groups. We used to do this long running document five years ago. And I think we've really enhanced the board breeze between Ms. Harris and myself and our team. And so that would just also be a question of the board if that seems to be working. But I will tell you, Joanne is looking at enhancing it even more to make it more user friendly. For the board possibly next week or the week after, so more to come on that. And I did speak to President Thorpe about that when we were meeting with one of the small group meetings with Mr. Trustee Dambrosio and Trust, and Trustee Watts the other day. Thank you.
All right, any other comments on that topic?
There's, I see a couple of hands. As I mentioned before though, with the current setup of the zoom screen, I can't see all trustees at once.
Okay, I'll stop and then just a quick follow up on trustee McDonald's comments. So when it comes to the media, even though we say, you know, I'm not representing the board, these are my opinions. Sometimes hopefully we never go back to those times, but I would say like seven years ago and nine years ago and probably about 12 years ago. Certain buildings were in spotlight in our district and there was one time where our district was in the spotlight. And we might be blindsided by a journalist calling to get a quick quote, just to kind of, you know, put a story out there. I think I strongly did, my opinion would be strongly recommend that goes to Dr. Maliko and his team or our communication director. Probably in a better position to put out a statement on our behalf.
I agree. And also David Mustin and he is the communications guy and we're lucky to have him.
Mary's trying to get our attention, Jim.
And I'd like. Are you guys able to hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, so what I was saying before is that since I can't see everyone at once currently. If you've got comments, just wait until the previous comment is done and then perhaps just jump in until we're able to see everyone on the same screen. Thanks.
Okay, then I'll jump in next. I, I will, especially for the new board members, when it comes to communication, you will at times get a individual complaint. From a parent, staff member, whatever, and feel compelled to say something. I would have the strong recommendation that you don't need to respond because a lot of times there's more to the story. And that you make sure that instead you just let them know that you've heard their and will pass along the information for further consideration to the superintendent. And that's.
We're going to be getting into that in a couple of.
Okay, good.
Yeah, the other thing about the media, if I can just add, so you know what I'm doing and David and I have the system developed because we do have David's outstanding, outstanding. And we have a, as you know, our communication with the community, it's multi-fold. I have my social media and the district does, so we work kind of collaboration. But whenever there's a press that contacts me, I refer it to him. And I ask him to vet it out first to see if it should be me or him or whoever. And I think President Thorpe, you just had one recently. So anything that I, I would say, yeah, you can send it to me and him. And then even if it comes to me or somebody else in the district, it always goes through him through, for consistency. So thank you.
Any other comments on that topic? Or any of the other board responsibilities that you see listed here?
I, I do have one quick question about the, and I know this is from Connecticut, so I don't know what they're, how they're set up. We have very strong unions that help develop our hiring and agendas now. I know this is not something we're adopting, this is just something you're using as a tool.
Yes.
Kind of thing, but I just want to remind everyone that not, not everything is going to sync up. With our local board responsibilities, if it's, especially if it's coming from out of state. And what we have to incorporate in a lot of our decision making and, and a union rules and regulations are a big part of our hiring decisions. And those rules are laid out individually separately.
So let, let me ask this, I realize that these come from out of state, but, but I do think they're, they're pretty reflective of how we go about doing our business.
It's a generic, yeah.
It is so, but, but what I would invite you to do is, is because I think that's exactly what we're trying to accomplish here. If there's anything else that you see here that you think, well, you know, I'm not sure that really quite applies to us or that's not really exactly how we would or should go about doing things. This is a great opportunity to share that and engage in dialogue about that so that we can all be very clear coming out of this meeting about what these responsibilities are. As it relates to Dearborn schools.
The one thing that I don't see here and the, the past voice of Dr. Mead is echoing in my ears would be strategic plan.
So I believe, I, I believe that's addressed under, and we'll find out when we get there, but just kind of keep an eye out for it, under joint responsibilities.
Thanks.
I think it is, so let's keep an eye out for that. Okay, so we're, we'll move on to superintendent's responsibility, same thing, I'll go through them. Slight pause, give you a chance to respond at the end of it. We can certainly jump in and have similar dialogue about any of the points included here. Before we do that, since the executive cabinet was mentioned, I feel compelled to give a quick shout out to them. I worked with many, most if not all of them during the time I was working with the district on strategic planning. And not only did I thoroughly enjoy that, but I just want to say how impressed Dr. Tonka Cliff and I were. You have such an outstanding team there and you're very fortunate to have them. So I, I'm glad to have the opportunity to jump in and share that. So superintendent's responsibilities. To implement policies approved by the board and recommend changes if appropriate. To develop, implement and inform the board of administrative procedures necessary to implement board policy. To serve as the board's chief executive officer and educational leader. To respond to communications as appropriate and ensure the adherence and appropriate response through the chain of command. To keep board members informed about district issues in a timely manner. To provide the board with good information for informed decision-making as appropriate. To prepare, advocate for and implement an annual budget that addresses district goals and meets the needs of all students. And to report regularly to the board on the status of the budget and any concerns or other issues about which the board should be informed. To oversee the organization and management of the district's day-to-day operations. To participate as appropriate in the annual self-evaluation of the board. To recommend appropriate resources to ensure that he can carry out his responsibilities. To work closely with the board chair to develop meeting agendas. To hire personnel for the school district as pursuant to the best practice and board policy. And ensure that each employee is properly supervised and evaluated and to make recommendations for termination of employment. To communicate community perspectives, research information, performance results and educational needs to the board and to school staff. And to serve as a key effective member of the leadership team.
Something I'd like to add to that is that the superintendent is generally the face of the district. And that serves as the face of the district to not only the community, but the legislators, to the state, to wherever he is called to represent us in that capacity.
I think that's a great point, absolutely.
Yes, he's the face of, of the district to the community. The one thing that I would ask is, or bring up is the item about the board evaluations. Where it says to participate as appropriate in the annual self-evaluation of it. We probably wouldn't want the superintendent to get very involved other than helping to provide the resource that we use to self-evaluate. We don't want him to really be helping us since we're the ones that evaluate him. We don't want him to, not necessarily meddle, but keep your hands off of this as much as possible.
So in your case, as appropriate would be kind of as requested.
Yeah, give us the reasons that we need to get this done and then step away.
Gotcha. Anything else that, that you folks would like to comment on, question? Take issue with? Okay, and the last part of this is joint responsibilities. To work together with the community to develop a vision and goals for the school district and to monitor the achievement of those goals. To advocate for students in the school district and promote the benefits of public education. To provide community leadership on educational issues by creating strong linkages with appropriate organizations, agencies and other groups. To provide support for healthy development and high achievement for all children. To collectively execute their legal responsibilities. To work collaboratively with appropriate agencies and bodies on an ongoing basis. To collaborate with other school boards and superintendents to inform legislators of local concerns and issues relative to education. To participate in continuing education specifically regarding their roles and responsibilities in irrelevant content areas. To support board actions and decisions. To semi-annually set aside time to discuss school board and superintendent relations. To belong to actively support and participate in their professional organizations and to encourage, to each encourage the other to do so. To institute a process for long-range and strategic planning that will position the school district for success. To ensure that the professional development opportunities consistent with district goals are available to all school district employees. To serve as liaisons to the community. And to ensure adherence to federal and state laws and board policies. Comments or questions that you have about that? So Jim, that did get to strategic planning. You're all good with those, makes sense?
John, if I can mention something that part of the MAS B, the Michigan Association of School Board Members Trainings. Especially 101 is that they talk about the governance clock. And they have a nice graphic, their training where they show the clock between the board authority and the superintendent authority. So I can, I don't know if I can share that, so.
Let me get out of this.
And this really is a very good guide for me as a board member and perhaps even to the superintendent to see the, the border lines. Between the superintendent's responsibilities and the board's responsibilities.
Okay.
So I thought this would be very useful to see it visually.
Okay, and I have been bounced out of, I can hear you, but I can't see with this.
You don't see the screen?
I don't, I'm, I'm, don't worry about that for now, I'm, I'm.
Sorry for.
No, I don't think that was, I'm not sure that was you.
I'm still seeing John's screen currently.
Okay.
I'm sure most of you had shared this, I think, last year.
Yes, I.
After you took 101, I remember you shared it with us.
I'm sharing my screen right now, do you see it or no?
I still see John's, I don't know about everyone else.
Okay.
Nah, Joanne, maybe you can help, but if you click on view options, then it says shared, if the, whoever is looking, if you click on shared screens. It's got trustee Moses and Mr. Silvery, and then you just click on the screen that you want, I believe.
Yeah, it should be idle right now.
Okay.
Okay, so this is the, the governance clock that I was talking about, hopefully you'll be able to see it now.
I'm still viewing John's screen.
And I'll tell you what, I am having some kind of technical issue here where for some reason I can hear everybody. But I can't get back to the screen, it's probably me, to be honest, but I, I just am unable to get back to. The screen, I can see while and manipulate anything. So if it's okay with you, what I may do quickly is log out and log back in. And maybe while I'm doing that, you're going to be able to pull up that additional document that you would like to.
I was able to pull it up, so if you look at the top of your screen in the middle, it says view options. If you pull that down, it gives you shared screens and you can choose whether or not we want, if you want to select adults' screen or John's.
Thank you, Irene.
No problem. And I just want to say as well that I was able to take all of the 100 level MAS B classes. And they were highly informative, so I was, I was really impressed by how much information I was given. And how applicable they were and still trying to remember all those, but I was really impressed by MAS B's presentation for all of those classes.
They do a good job.
They do.
And one thing that I'd like to add to the joint responsibilities under the supporting the board and districts actions. Something to remind all board members is once we vote on an action and a direction taken. Regardless of whether you voted yes or no, if it passes, it's a public responsibility of board members to support that yes vote. Regardless of whether you might have disagreed with it at the time of the vote is when you're able to reflect your disagreement with it. But once it's passed by the full board, it should be supported by the, the superintendent and the full board to move it forward. Even if you do it in a quiet way rather than a very vocal way if you disagree.
And under the next agenda item, establishing operating norms and standards of practice that may well be one of those things that you would like to.
Yeah.
Add. Okay. Ready to move on? So let's move on to item six on the agenda. DPS Governance Team Operating Norms and Standards of Practice. And this is about just identifying just some basic, I don't know if rules is the right word, but standards of practice really fits. These are some things that we all agree to in terms of how we're going to go about doing our business together. This is not detailed and like the Board Procedures Manual, which does get into great detail and outlines all kinds of procedures. These are just some basic agreements that you put into place to say, this is how we're going to go about doing our business together. One of which, for example, could be something like, once a board decision is made, you'll hear all opinions, you'll have discussion. But once an opinion is made, everybody gets behind that decision. I did send you something that I won't pull up now because there's a lot to go through, but I'm going to refer you to. It's a form that has a lot of information there. At the top of it, it says seven signs of effective school board members. And then it goes on and has 10 tips for school board members. And finally, the principles that guide our work. That was really to serve as just providing multiple examples of things that could end up giving you some ideas. As to what could end up being operating norms and or standards of practice for your board. So if you have that, what I invite you to do is as we're having this discussion. If we were doing this face-to-face, what I'd invite you to do, and you can do it now. Is just as you're kind of referring to that, if you have a highlighter on hand or just something to mark with. And mark those things that really stand out for you that you may want to mention as something that can serve as the basis for a standard of practice for the Dearborn board. So that's a reference for you to use for this purpose. I'm going to pull up a document now, hopefully I won't have the same trouble I just did. Yeah, let's see. There we go. This is something that was created some time ago by the Michigan Leadership Institute, just to serve as, as an example of what I'm talking about, right? And again, it's only to serve as an example, not something that I'm looking for you to adopt on your own. If there are things here you think would fit your board, you certainly could suggest that they serve as one of the Dearborn school standards of practice. But for now, I want to have it up here for you to see as a point of reference. And in particular, and hopefully that's large enough for you to see. I'm going to take you through, not so much, well, maybe a little bit of a quiz, but I'm just going to test you a little bit as you see these. I want to share with you some situations. These are things that I think with each of these things, there are things that literally have occurred at some point in a school district that we know of. And I want to ask you, which of these standards of practice would apply to the situation that I'm giving you? If you, and if you, when you see it, this is not hard by the way, this, this is not intended to throw anybody off. Actually, I think it's for the most part fairly obvious, but for what it's worth, when you see the correlation, just kind of shout out a number. So the first being, here's the first situation, in a conversation with the superintendent. A board officer tells the superintendent to reassign a custodian friend of his to a day shift to accommodate his family situation. Which of these standards would that be by?
Number five?
Number five, no individual board member has authority to direct the superintendent, it absolutely fits. Are there others? In some cases, there may be more than one.
Number one as well is that we have to make sure that we only have one employee as a board who reports to us as a superintendent. And we don't meddle in other employees' matters.
Yes, I would agree. Okay. There's another one for you. A newly elected board member requests that the assistant superintendent prepare a report on staff discipline activities.
Well, you have number four, number three.
Number 11 as well, you need to vote for as well to be adopted.
Yes. Okay, so then again, multiple standards may apply in different ways to that scenario. Next one, the superintendent compiles a report on transportation costs and sends it only to the board president and vice president.
Number six.
Number six, a biggie, we had a problem years ago.
Well, and, and.
They're with everyone.
Yeah, apparently you've learned from that and, and that's a pretty standard practice and it's a very smart thing to do for everybody's sake.
John, can I comment on that one?
Yes, please.
The board and all the new trustees coming in, and this kind of goes back to my superintendent academy training, to be honest. And with MAS B, I went to training along with MAS A superintendent. But the board is aware and the new trustees are seeing, you know, there's a section that I have put in there. We have two things, we have a board request for information, so it's official at the board meeting that it goes into that document. But if there's a board member that requests something from me, I may get it to them individually over that day. But the, the rest of the board can expect that they'll see that information. But the the rest of the board can expect that they'll see that information in the Thursday board brief, um. Uh, or s- you know, or it will be just commented on what the information, so that that way. The board, whatever data they are asking for, whatever they wanted me to look into, the full board will get that, I, like I said, I may. Email them the next day to that individual, but by Thursday, uh, everyone would get that information, and I've been following that since I've been superintendent.
Very good, thanks, man.
And I will say from uh, being on a board that had issues with it when I first came um, on many years ago. It is uh, the most divisive thing that can occur with a board. Is to have the superintendent only sharing information with some board members and not the full board. And it's a big stickler with me.
I hear that. Okay, let's go to the next one. After a long discussion on a heated topic, two board members who voted on the minority side of an issue posted Facebook message on how they do not agree with the action that the board has taken. Which one does that violate?
Okay, say, read, can you read that again?
Oh, happy to. After a long discussion on a heated topic. Two board members who voted on the minority side of an issue posted Facebook message on how they do not agree with the action that the board has taken.
There's, there's my thing.
Yeah, yeah, and so I heard somebody say it, number eleven. Public support is displayed for votes of the board, even by those voting in the minority, and and you're right, that's exactly what you had just mentioned a short time ago.
Is that really a violation, though? I mean, sometimes board members need to say why they dissent in some. Decisions, are they still obviously support the overall decision, but. Sometimes their individual perspective needs to be displayed now. I don't know about the medium as far as Facebook, but.
The time to show your dissent, I think the time to show your dissent is during the discussion of that particular item. Um, before the vote, but once it is voted on by the board, it is uh, the opinion of the board. And we all need to get behind that opinion.
And, and a part of it is the medium, uh, in the past, you know, if somebody voted no on something and somebody came up to you in the grocery store. You would say, yeah, I really didn't like that, and you could share your personal opinion, but it's private. When you go on Facebook or take another format that is public and is easily displayed. Um, that that continues the ongoing divisiveness of the decision making process. Which should be one and done at the time. What I always said as board president that year is, your vote is your voice. You've given your opinion, you've had your opportunity to speak, the public has the opportunity to see where you stand. You don't need the larger public display to be ongoing because it continues to create um. Discourse in the community that um, doesn't then allow for everyone getting behind. The direction that the board is intending to take. That's my personal opinion.
I guess I'd like to put it out there, what if, you know, you were approached by constituency and you were asked about, you know, your decision? Your vote, or if you preface by saying, you know, as a board, we already decided, this is, this is our, we're doing, but this is what I was thinking. Uh, I guess, would that be a problem? Like, that's why I'm kind of uh, thinking about what uh, Aden mentioned, that's why I propose this question, i- is it a problem? Let's say I go to Kroger the next day and somebody says, I see the way you voted, and they might agree with me or disagree, but they wanted. You know, hear exactly what I was thinking, maybe they weren't paying attention during discussion.
That's why I'm saying there's a difference between the private conversation you have with an individual versus a public posting.
I I'll just jump in and say that I think if if uh, to that question, somebody asks you a question, well, you know, so why did you vote no on that issue? Majority of the board voted yes, um, I think to respond and be able to say, well, you know, here was my thinking. But it's a good opportunity in part to educate members of the community about how the board works too, right, and to be able to say, but, you know, the. Majority of board members have had uh, saw it differently, you know, here's kind of some of what they shared. And ultimately, this is what the board as a whole voted on, and I fully support that decision, and you know, going forward to make the best of it.
I think Mary's point is that, you know, talking to someone individually versus putting it on social media. In the social media world today, i- it's gone all over the place, and uh, I don't think it should be out there on the social media. Uh, on on them type of decisions.
One thing I'd like to add to, on big decisions, we're responsible for not only hiring the superintendent, but we also hire the college president. And the board has not always been unanimous in that decision, but once that decision is made, every member of the board needs to support that decision. And support that uh, particular person, because not doing so sets up the district or the college for failure. If you support that person, even if you may have thought that another choice was better. Then it sets us up for success, it sets up that particular leader for success, and it's good practice for the district.
I would ask, when we are in the middle of discussion, what if? Before a vote, you don't know necessarily what direction I'm going, what if it's. Vote is given, that a person that dissents gives their their reason why, if they didn't give it in discussion, is. How do we feel about that?
Uh, uh, where, and what point would they be giving their dissent after the vote? Uh, outside of a board meeting, or at the meeting?
Like, right after the vote was done.
So, it's still in a public, still in a public. Board meeting. Yeah, I wouldn't see that as being um, contrary. Uh, you you're getting one last shot, basically, but it's public and the rest of the board is there and knows what you're saying.
I I'll just add to that, I I don't disagree, but I think it would be important, though, to, for that member then to reinforce that. In spite of the fact that they may have some disagreement, that they fully support the board's decision going forward. I think it would be important to to state that publicly.
I got a question for you, John.
Yes.
Uh, let's say, there's a discussion about uh, building another middle school in our district. And let's say I was for or against, let's say I was for it.
Okay.
But the board decided not to. Okay, but uh, and I fully respect the board's decision, but on public, as an individual, as a taxpayer, as a resident of the city. Uh, I thought they would still be uh, more responsible. To have that, you know, additional, you know, saving money, no longer, the additional buildings, saving money, long run. If I was to speak on that in any means, you know, if it's in, you know, like it's Kroger or social media, what have you, am I violating anything?
Well, bear in mind, these are, are, we're talking about board norms, you're not violating um, technically, you know, legally, you're certainly not. Um, so this is really all about just what, again, coming down to. How you're all agreeing that you're gonna go about doing your business together, right, so if there's agreement that once there's a decision made, that you're not going to kind of publicly dissent. That's the kind of issue that you cited, um, who's saying that you could, uh, for example. You may want to revisit that at some point, if you continue to feel strongly, it when it initially comes up. There's not consensus on the board should proceed, but you're still hearing from other people that there's support behind building another middle school, you still feel like there's reasons for it. There's nothing wrong with you at some point, kind of resurfacing the issue with the board to see if, you know, kind of take their temperature, see if there may be a change. See if there may be some compelling reasons to revisit that issue and see if there there may well be, uh, at that point, a a different decision reached. Um, it's a slippery slope, I think, if out in public. Um, in any way, shape or form, other than, as was cited, if it's just a private conversation, one on one for you to express, yep, I I, you know, I. I would like to see us do it, but the board, majority of the board disagrees.
We actually have a board policy that addresses this, and set, and makes the statement that once a vote is taken. That i- it's in our, it's in our board policies.
Well, then I would, I would respond a little bit more strongly to it, then I appreciate that. Board policy in particular, those were formally adopted by the board. And of all people that should be following board policy, it's it's members of the board, obviously, so. If it's in board policy, I would suggest then you treat it like gospel and and.
I guess the board could take censure with the. Board trustee, a public censure, if they, if they were in violation of it, they so chose.
That's true. And worst case scenario, that could happen, yes.
So to follow up with that, um, is there a distinction in terms of, say, for Facebook? If you were to have those trustees who have their trustee Facebook page versus their personal Facebook page, is there a distinction? With that, cuz I think that.
Do we get to walk away from our trustee? Place at this point in time, once you're duly elected and take your oath of office, you are a trustee first. I I I suspect that it would be very difficult to say, well, this is my private versus my public.
I think you, you are a trustee, you took an oath, you can't walk away from your responsibilities. But the same time, you are an individual and have individual thoughts.
Well, and and that's what I'm saying, like, for instance, you know, if we were to have, I don't know. Share an article on there as your own personal, does that then go into the? You're posting as an individual, but then is there that gray area that some may say that you're posting as a trustee? Is there any sort of, anything, any wording on the policy regarding that? Do you think that's something that we probably need to?
I I.
I don't know.
I think legally, uh, you know, you're, yeah, you're, you're talking about, uh, we do in the policy, it does address. Um, your individual, um. A- and making sure as trustee McDonald said, that you preface, this is my personal opinion. Um, we do address that in the policy, but that policy was done way before the social media. Explosion, and so it may be dated to some extent, and so if we.
I think this discussion is obviously uh, taking place now. Uh, because of uh, the power of the social media. For us to say legally, not legally, obviously, we're not attorneys, we can't interpret things the way we want. But uh, I, you know, let's, let's, let's put the pressure off us on a board, as a board, let's say an employee of the district. The teacher has certain. Parameters, what you can talk about and what you can't talk about, and what have you, with her parents and da 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 da. Uh, and this just happened recently, and I brought it up, you know, and I discussed this with a couple people, and superintendent, and they said, well, it was kind of her. Her or his Facebook page is personal, it's on personal time, so what's the difference? It's a question.
I I I'll just, I'll jump in and say this, and I and I want you to take this more as my opinion than anything, please, my professional opinion, so I I'll take it for what it's worth, but. The safest path for you to walk on this one would be. That even if it's a personal Facebook page or or a personal Twitter account or whatever it might be. That you're basically free to express any personal opinions that you want to. But when it's an issue that's the subject of board discussion, decision, you know, it's it's a school district issue. I think the safest path for you to walk is just to steer clear of it on those public forums, um. Because it it is, it could end up being the source of, you can see from this discussion, you know, there's, there's. It it can be a little bit of a gray area too, but it can cause dissension and unrest, and and really, again, where you're looking to have a cohesive board. You're all working closely together, firing on all cylinders. Even if you can defend, well, it's my private page, and and so I'm free to express my personal opinion. Um, but I think you could also understand why that would rankle other board members if in reality, it's about something that, um. For example, that the board voted on, that you may disagree with, and you're you're hearing a dissenting opinion, even though it's on your personal Facebook page, so. My my personal advice from a professional perspective would be that the safest bet would be to question, ask yourself, really, even if it's personal. If it's about school business, do I need to go there, and and I would suggest that you just steer away, and I I think that keeps you, um. Keeps you on the straight and narrow and completely out of, out of trouble.
I completely understand what you just said, and I respect it, and I just wanna make sure. That, you know, like, later on, we have a good, we have a great board, and uh, it's, it's, you know, seven plus the superintendent and the president. I believe we have a great team, and there's a lot of teamwork that happens, we don't always agree, but it's a lot of team, I don't want anybody thinking, like, later on. If something was to happen, let's say trustee A, B, and C, uh, says, does something. I don't want to be able to go back and say, wait a second, we said, which, we decided what was legal and wasn't, and we decided that if somebody was gonna speak their mind. We were gonna censorship and go that route, that's getting a little dangerous there, that's all I'm saying, because obviously, we still live in a country where there's freedom of speech.
Right.
Yeah, obviously, we all gotta concentrate on teamwork, and you know, move the district and the college forward. But I just wanna, I don't want this, from this discussion, I know this is a study, so I don't want from this discussion, later on, somebody says, oh, by the way. You know, I don't wanna pick on anybody, trustee so and so, you were warned about this, just gotta be careful, we're not the attorneys here.
I don't see this as a warning, but one thing I just wanna say is, as a member of the Board of Education. The community, once they know who you are, that is the label that they put on you. And they're going to look at everything you do through that lens. Um, I was telling trustee Watson, the conversation we had you recently, that if you do not put your card away at the grocery store. People see that as. You're supposed to be above these things, you're supposed to do the right thing, you're supposed to set the example for the community. So I think we have to just be cognizant of the role that we play, and before we post anything, before we uh. We do things on social media, et cetera, we just have to weigh that responsibility and be cognizant of it.
Yeah, it it's, it's a fair point, all of these are fair points, really, and and great questions, this is one of those issues that, you know, again, there's, there's some gray there. Um, I think this kind of dialogue is helpful, so I I I'm not sure you're walking away from this with complete clarity, I really wanna go with it, honestly. I I don't know if it's possible to get that, but in part, again, as we get to the next step, which is to establish norms. If there's a a a norm or a standard of practice that addresses this, that you're all willing to agree to. That's a promise to one another, that here's what we're promising to stick with, so perhaps you might be able to accomplish that uh, through that step. Which, as I look at the clock, I'm thinking, um, I have more scenarios, but I think I'm gonna. Pass on those, and in the interest of time, keep uh, things moving forward. Um, and what I wanna ask of you at this point, then, and again, what you have is references, is the other um. Attachment that I'd sent that I referenced, where at the top on the front page, it says seven signs of effective school board members. We have also what you see here up on the screen currently, which you also have in hand, district, I don't think you have this one in hand, district governance team standards of practice, but we've had a chance to. We've had a chance to see these and to discuss them. So I'm gonna get out of this screen.